I was watching for you.
I'd like to call the Public Session of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners to order, please. We'll start out with a courtesy resolutions. First will be the Oak Ridge High School Scholarship Presentation by Steve Mead.
Yeah, Steve Mead, Anderson County Commissioner, District Six. The Anderson County Board of Commissioners established and began contributing personal funds to a scholarship fund in 1996. This fund is set to provide a scholarship annually to a student at each of the three high schools in Anderson County. I would like to thank the Guidance Department here at Oak Ridge High School for their efforts in soliciting applicants and selecting the scholarship recipient. Commissioners, we don't pick who it is. We figure that the teachers and the folks at the high school are actually the best ones to select this. On behalf of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, I'd like to introduce our recipient. I'd like to introduce Carlotta McCarroll Toledo. You can just stand right here. Thank you so much. Let me close by this presentation, this part of the presentation, by congratulating you, Carlotta, on your achievements of being recognized here tonight and encourage you to continue your education with the same enthusiasm you have demonstrated up to this point and led you getting this award.
Thank you.
And I'd like to read the citation. Be it resolved this 21st day of May 2018, the Anderson County Board of County Commissioners hereby award the 22nd Annual County Commission Scholarship in the amount of $500 to Carlotta Alexandra McCarroll Toledo. And I think I got most of that name right. She coached me before the meeting. And in this logo, it has the certificate that tells you how to do this, and the money goes right into the fund at your college. You can use it for books, or equipment, or whatever, or supplies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Carlotta, will you come back up to the microphone for a moment? Just kind of tell us what it is that you're going to go to school for.
I will be attending Maribor College this upcoming fall semester and majoring in political science with a focus on international affairs. I hope to later on go into immigration advocacy and maybe after college work for a nonprofit and later go on for immigration law.
Beautiful. Congratulations.
Next, we have Anderson County Animal Rescue Foundation by Katrina Hall.
Hello. I appreciate your time and also the opportunity to speak with you tonight. So first of all, I want to explain who we are and why we started this foundation. My name is Katrina Hall, and I'm the President of Anderson County Animal Rescue Foundation, or ACRF for short. We have an amazing team as our Board of Directors. Steve Newby way in the back here is our Vice President. Malia Hayes, who couldn't be here tonight because she had to work, is our Treasurer. Joe Matting is our Secretary, and the infamous Joe Hall is our Director. We are all non-paid volunteers who are dedicated to our cause and our community. We also have Brian Porter, who's the current Director for Anderson County Shelter, and Mayor Frank is our Advisors. Our mission is to aspire to promote humane treatment of animals in Anderson County. We will advocate responsible companion animal ownership through educational programs and strive to increase public awareness of the need and value of community involvement and responsibility for public and animal welfare. We will provide a safe environment for unwanted stray, abused, or abandoned animals with the goal of finding loving forever homes for homeless animals. So as you know, our current animal shelter is taking in all animals from within our county limits, and that includes Clinton, Oliver Springs, Rocky Top, and at times Oak Ridge and Norris. Our total intake for 2017 was 925 animals, and we expect that number to continue to increase. While the current staff and the volunteers at our shelter are doing an incredible job of finding animals, I mean finding animals' new homes through adoption, we work with rescue organizations, we work with transports to relocate animals, but there are limited resources and needs which cannot be met with the current facility. Some of the main limitations that we have are lack of space. We currently only have 12 dog kennels and 12 cat cages for the entire county. The location, we're currently in with the recycling facility, and we can only be open to the public one day a week. There's no area for quarantine or isolation for sick animals. We have no veterinary or surgical area. We have no adoption area available to showcase or meet our adoptable pets. And we have a lack of educational activities to provide opportunities to educate the public concerning animal welfare, training, and overall pet ownership, responsible pet ownership. But we can't do it by ourselves, so our hope is that we want to partner with the Anderson County Government and the animal shelter to create a new state-of-the-art animal shelter for Anderson County, for all of Anderson County. This shelter will provide exceptional shelter, services, educational opportunities, and veterinary care for our animals and pet-friendly community. So we need you and our community to make this possible. We have a very large animal-loving community in Anderson County. Some of our supporters are here with us tonight, and I'm sure you recognize a lot of them, especially maybe the ones in the green shirt for their past service to this community, and we're proud to have them on our team. We must raise funds from the general public and from corporations and receive grants from government and other nonprofit organizations. Funds raised will help to design, build, and maintain a larger facility to serve the county's population, fix the issues with our current facility, and meet the overall needs of the community and our companion animals. So I'm here to ask for your help and for your support. So we want to show our support and commitment to become one of the most pet-friendly counties in the state. And that won't only be rewarding for our current citizens, but also help to attract a younger population for our county. We want to collaborate with you to make this a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
How do you tie into the project that's already in place with, didn't we just give them, give?
There is a task force that was, that was formed, I think, two years ago.
Right.
And that task force went through the steps to create what was the Anderson County Animal Holding Facility, which is the current facility that has 12 dog kennels and 12 cat cages. And that's where we're operating now. The next step is to create an actual state-of-the-art animal shelter for the county.
But it was about a year ago that the mayor and a group came forward asking for land. What's going on there? I mean, is, do you have any kind of plans or anything sketched out?
Yeah, we're currently looking at, we're putting out bids for architectural firms to actually do a design concept for the shelter. So really, the next step is to proceed to understand how big the shelter needs to be. We've also done a needs assessment. The University of Tennessee performed a needs assessment for us to try and understand some of the requirements that we should have in this architectural design concept. So we're taking what the task force started, and we're trying to progress and move toward the ultimate goal of a state-of-the-art animal shelter.
How many volunteers do you have working on this project right now?
Not enough. We have, we're starting a volunteer program now. When we started last year, kind of putting this together, we had two volunteers. And so now, one of our volunteers, Ms. Barbara Burton, has tried to create more of a team of volunteers, and we're building that. But one of the subcommittees that will be part of ACR from our group will be specifically to create a huge volunteer base to help us with fundraising, as well as to create some of the things for the current shelter, like foster programs and those kinds of things.
About a year ago, there were, there were groups such as Sarge and Bark that were working on this project. Do you, are you still going to incorporate those volunteer groups?
Yeah, actually, a lot of those are here with us right now. Sarge is a huge supporter of ours.
Good.
And so we work with them, and they support us. They actually will be working to donate a van, actually, to the Anderson County Animal Shelter very soon. And so we appreciate them beyond measure, actually. But yeah, they're a wonderful group of people. And Bark also, yes, we work with Bark, and they actually come to the shelter once a week and help with the animals and lead them and take them on walks and do different things.
Are you still taking animals, I'm sorry, taking cats and kittens to the PetSmart?
PetSmart in Oak Ridge. Yes, ma'am. We are partnering with PetSmart in Oak Ridge, so all of our cats, all the cats that are at PetSmart come from our shelter. And so we've built a group of volunteers that help us at the PetSmart, and they work to help adopt our cats from there. And it's helped tremendously to give us another place and a showcase for our cats to be able, because as I mentioned earlier, where we are right now is not very, it's not very, it's not a good place to come and look for people to adopt animals. We don't have an adoption center. We don't have anywhere that people can come on a regular basis to do that. So that's why the PetSmart, which is open seven days a week, I don't know how many, 10 hours a day or whatever, they can come and see them anytime. And that makes a huge difference when you're trying to adopt out animals.
Well, and when you said animals, are you including any of the raptors?
No, not. Right now, there's no place to put that. But one of the things that we've talked about in, as part of ACR, in our mission, is that currently, the facility is, we have cat cages and dog cages, and that's it. But truly, we are supposed to be a shelter for all of the animals. So horses, pigs, goats, all of these things right now, we have no place as an animal shelter to be able to help when there are abused animals, and there are abused animal cases, especially with the horses and goats and sometimes pigs. And so that's one of the things that we want to add as part of our new shelter, is a place for those types of larger animals.
And where do, where do your efforts stand with the 501(c)(3)?
We have filed for a 501(c)(3). We officially filed. Fox and Farley is our power of attorney, and so we filed for that on April 23rd. And I received a letter today, actually, from the IRS, and so we anticipate approval, formal approval, within 90 days.
Okay. And Mayor, you're good with this program?
Oh, yeah, they're doing awesome.
Good, cool. All right, thank you, and sorry for so many questions.
No, thank you. I appreciate the questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner, may you... Was there not a parcel of land that we set aside next to the, right, that said joint, that adjoins the current facility that was committed by the county for this purpose? I'm pretty sure that's true. I can't remember how many acres it is. It was 10 acres, I think, or it was like nine point something. Okay. You are aware of that, right?
I'm aware. I was, I'm not aware that it's completely and totally approved by the Commissioner or what state of approval that's in. So if it's completely approved, and what we need to do to proceed with that, yeah, I would certainly like to speak with how to proceed with that.
I recall that it was, in fact, approved by the Commission, but we were waiting for you guys to come with, you know, where we're going to go next, and there was going to be fundraising and such, and coming up with a design, kind of where you are now.
Yeah, I'm going to let Steve answer that question, because he was actually on the task force that I was not part of at that time, so I don't want to answer something.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Steve Newby. I was on the task force with the mayor at the time that the discussion took place between the, at that time, the task force and the, well, I guess you would call your Parks and Recreation Department, Conservation Department. At that time, Chairman Arment and Mr. Warfield, there was discussion about the 200-something acres were there, and us asking for seven to 10 acres, and there was a large debate. And it did not get really resolved on how the direction was going to be taken from the Commission on how that would be finalized. So at that time, we had stepped down from that discussion because we were unaware of how the Commission truly felt. There was supposed to be discussion between us and the Conservation Board. That discussion also was tabled to other factors, so therefore, the discussion never was completed. Then at that time, we started talking to the Tennessee Valley Authority, if possible, on trying to find other land. So if the Commission is willing to go back to that discussion and resolve that issue to where we could take those 10 acres potentially to have a small animal and large animal facility, then we're ready to move forward.
Because the existing facility is on county land.
That is correct. It is within the properties of your county land. Yes, sir.
I just, am I the only one that thinks that we actually approved that? Oh, is it just the three acres?
We were asking for seven to 10 with a discussion. That's when it was supposed to have been before the Conservation Committee, correct, Mayor? And that's what is in the notes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, then I did, I think what I recall is there was an approval of the three acres that the thing is on right now.
That is correct.
And there was a lot of discussion about, there was like a lot already there, already established, that was around 29 and 10 acres.
There's a wetland area on the other side of where we have the facility that was discussed. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
In the back corner. Yes, sir. Anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we have Norwood Middle School, 2017-2018 Student Government Association. Proclamation being read by Commissioner McCamey.
Mr. Chairman, I'm really honored to get to present this resolution tonight. No better place than here before their county government. This is the Student Government Association from Norwood Middle School. I'll read the resolution honoring the Norwood Middle School Student Government Association. Whereas the Norwood Middle School Student Government Association for school year 2017-2018 has demonstrated exemplary work performance and remarkable leadership skills as judged by their student peers and school administrators. And whereas these 16 young men and women have succeeded in many worthy endeavors for their school and community, there are many accomplishments, including leading the employee appreciation program, organizing and leading monthly school-wide assemblies, school dances, creating the Student Behavior Incentive Program. And whereas, they also led school-sponsored community initiatives by collecting food for less fortunate community members, raising money for Uniself, and a $600 donation to the Leukemia and Lymphomast Society. And whereas, each member has learned and appreciated public speaking opportunities, parliamentary procedure, and an increased appreciation for the democratic process. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Legislative Body meeting in regular session this 21st day of May 2018, that we honor and applaud the members of the Norwood Middle School Student Government Association for their exemplary accomplishments and demonstrated leadership skills both inside and outside the classroom, resolved, duly passed, approved, and effective this 21st day of May 2018. And I want to call the names of the students, and if you would, just raise your hand when I do that. Brooke Lowe, eighth grade president. Madison Guy, eighth grade vice president. Hannah Dyson, eighth grade treasurer. Courtney Simpson, eighth grade secretary. Bradley Bailey, eighth grade representative. Seth Holbrook, eighth grade representative. Hunter Seber, seventh grade president. Daniel Hardwick, seventh grade vice president. Melody Rutherford, seventh grade secretary. Jackson Stiltner, seventh grade treasurer. Catherine Delk, seventh grade representative. Brittany Farmer, seventh grade representative. Maggie Irwin, sixth grade class president. Kendra Holbrook, sixth grade vice president. Laura Beasley, sixth grade treasurer, and Madeline Rutherford, sixth grade secretary. Let's give them a good hand here.
One of these guys ought to make a speech.
I don't know what to say. Um, should I even say, I don't know. I'll explain what we do. Pretty much, get this a little bit closer. You pretty much summed up a lot of stuff, but there's some, some things that come deeper within just the members of SGA, Student Government Association. And it's kind of more deeply like a bond. Like, I know and personally and very deeply all these people, and I would not have known some of them without student government. And, you know, that's great, but student government, it's, I don't know, it's really, really fun to say speeches like this, you know? I just volunteered to come up here. It's really fun to do that stuff. And a friend at school, too. But, and it's really fun to help with raising, like, raising money for fundraisers and assemblies for our school. So that is, that's why I'm in SGA. And Brooke Lowe is here to say her part. So what I think about SGA is that we, each grade, there's a president for each grade, and there's students for each grade. So whatever's going wrong inside of their grade, they have the chance to fix it. If there's somebody getting bullied inside their grade, which rarely happens, they have the chance and ability to fix it and fix everything that goes on in between their grade that they don't like. They have that ability and voice to say, hey, this doesn't need to happen. This needs to be fixed. That's why I like it, and I've done it for all three years. So, thank you.
Dan, you want to say something here? Where's Courtney?
Hey, I just want to say that I don't know if I could say anymore. This is a group that's special to us at Norwood. Like they said, they have a voice. They come and talk to us daily, weekly, about problems that they have and we need to fix. But it's really easy being a president of a school where you have this kind of group that steps out, and they're really, they're a voice for students. And so I feel blessed and lucky to have them. Thank you, guys.
Oh, I'm Ms. Courtney, the leader of SGA and the daughter of Tim Isabel. I'm proud of that one. And these guys, we require a lot out of them, more so than the regular students. They have to keep up their grades, and, because we're constantly pulling them out of class. That's one of their favorite things, is getting pulled out of class all the time. But we require them to be leaders all the time, not just when we're having our meetings, but outside of school. If I see they're doing something they shouldn't, we'll be calling them out on it. So I'm very proud of them and excited. And I'm thankful for the parents to be here tonight, to bring them. And I know that we're not the closest right here, but I'm very appreciative of the families being such good families, because we have wonderful students.
Are you staying here?
Are you staying here?
Yeah.
We've got another resolution honoring Harry Patton requested by Commissioner Creasy.
It is much honor for me to read this resolution honoring Harry Eugene Patton, Sr. Whereas on April the 6th, 2018, Anderson County lost one of the most respected and prolific statesmen in the history of our great county. And whereas Harry Patton was a leader and dedicated public servant who loved everyone and everything about Clinton and Anderson County. From his early years witnessing school desegregation during the infancy of the civil rights movement to his many years leading Clinton as a city councilman, mayor, passionate citizen, Harry rose above all others and solved many community problems with his able-bodied personality and uncanny ability to bring people together for the common good. And whereas Harry demonstrated his leadership skills in many community organizations that positively impacted the lives of all Anderson County citizens, whether as a leader in Clinton City Government, Mid Hill Regional Industrial Development Board, chapter president of the Sons of the Revolution, Clinton J.C.'s, or as a devoted member of St. Mark's United Methodist Church, his ability to make positive things happen was unmatched. And whereas Harry brought out the best in everyone, he touched and many people have attempted to emulate Harry's ability to solve community issues. But a rare few will ever be able to duplicate the heart, soul, devotion, and everlasting smile that filled the room when Harry spoke. Whereas Harry was the consummate family man, always praising his dear family and his soulmate of sixty-three years, his wife Anne. The two were an inseparable team and true ambassadors for the city of Clinton. Harry often would remark that Anne was the best thing that ever happened to him and that his true motivation for success came from her and their wonderful family. Now therefore be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session this 21st day of May, 2018, that we honor our dear friend for his many community endeavors that left a profound and everlasting imprint on our great county. Be it further resolved that we declare May the 26th, 2018, is Harry Patton Day in Anderson County in honor of his many lifelong accomplishments and exemplary citizenship. Rest in peace, our dear friend. Resolved, duly passed, approved, and effective this 21st day of May, 2018.
Good job.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. This is a beautiful resolution and we will treasure these words. Harry did love Clinton. He loved Anderson County. And he loved working with everyone. And, um, we're so very proud of him and thank you for being proud of him also. He'd be so pleased.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Thank you.
Harry was the charter president of the Sons of the Revolution and they're present in the audience tonight to also honor Harry. And, uh, they will be doing the prayer and the pledge. And...
Thank you, Commissioner. We're going to take a ten-minute recess. This concludes the public session. Then we'll come back and then the Sons of the Revolution will lead us in the prayer and the pledge. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to the Anderson County Board of Commissioners this Monday, May 21st, 2018. To order, please, commissioners, go to the, uh, register your attendance. Sixteen present. First, we're going to have the prayer by Steve Portwood, which is a member of the Sons of the Revolution, and then the pledge by Gerald Mustin.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this opportunity to be here tonight and to pay tribute to our great friend, and we miss him so much. Thank you for allowing him to be a part of our lives. Lord, we have watched these students come in here this evening and to be honored and to listen to their goals and their dreams, and we are so pleased that you have blessed us with such fine individuals and our people and our school boards and our principals and teachers that are working with these children. Please bless them, guide them, honor them as they need to be. We thank you so much. This committee here, Lord, we thank you for them. We ask your hand on these people to keep them straight, keep them focused, and keep them to allow this community to continue to grow and prosper and do what is right. We have so much to be thankful for, and we are so blessed, and we love our county, we love our city, and we thank you for all that you've done for us. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen. Hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recover.
Next, we have appearance of citizens. Any citizens like to come forward and speak to the board? But now I'm coming forward, we'll move along. I've been advised to remind each Commissioner to try to speak into your microphone. I guess that goes for me more than anybody else, but just try to be cognizant of that as we go forward. Next is approval and correction of agendas. Consent agenda? Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Regular agenda?
Second.
Have a motion second. Any corrections or additions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to new business, uh, the Strive and Media.
Contract.
Contract, under new business, please, sir.
We have a motion. We have second.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other changes for the regular agenda? We'll move forward. Purchasing report. MacArthur?
Hello, everyone. Uh, under section A, contracts approved by law director, we have four. Would you like to approve them?
We have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Submitting for your approval, under section B, contracts pending law director approval, there are three. Would you like to approve as a group or individually?
Move for approval as a group?
Second.
Approval as a group. Any discussion?
Uh, discussion, uh, dependent upon approval by the law director.
I think we do have two of the three back. All our contracts are pending law director approval, so. I mean, they always get law director approval, I should say.
Commissioner Smallridge? Oh, that's okay. Okay. The motion is to approve as a group. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Um, under new business, it was just approved to add the contract with Strive and Media for the schools to the agenda, so if you would like to approve that?
Yeah, we can take it up then. We have a motion second and discussion. So everybody know what we're voting on. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Nominating committee report by Chairman Alston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee, upon motion made by Commissioner White and seconded by Commissioner Mead, accepted the resignation of Matthew Stout, who moved out. The chairman acknowledged that, and he was removed. Commissioner White made a motion to nominate Ralph Daniels to the beer board, seconded by Commissioner Scott. The motion carried to full commission, and I so approve.
Have motion second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Commissioner Fritz made a motion to put Commissioner White back on the beer board, contingent on the beer board removing Matthew Hall from the board, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Motion to full commission, and I so move.
Have motion second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Commissioner Fritz made a motion to nominate Ralph Daniels as an alternate member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, seconded by Commissioner Scott. The motion carried to full commission, and I so move.
Have motion second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Also, the fourth item, Commissioner Isbell made a motion to reconstitute the Ethics Committee, seconded by Commissioner Scott. The motion carried to full commission, as reiterated, and I so move.
Have motion second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Directors of Schools.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell. Glad to be here tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for the cards and well wishes in the passing of my father last couple of weeks. It's been a hard time, but we know he's in a better place. So, uh, but anyway, just a few things. As you know, yesterday, we had all of our graduation. We started on Friday night with CRCS and ended up at Thompson Bowlin Arena yesterday. About 580 graduates this year. One of the highest ACT scoring classes that we've ever had. We had more students that had scored over 30 on their ACT than ever before. And, and, and that, that in itself is pretty amazing, but I want to tell you just a little bit about another group of students tonight. About four years ago, we started a, a, a program called the Connect Academy. And the Connect Academy is for, is for students with special needs, and it is run out of Anderson County High School. There's, there's teachers there, but Clinton and Anderson County both go into that school, and, uh, they take their English and math with, with those teachers, and, uh, those teachers build a relationship with those students. And yesterday, we saw the success of that. 100% of the students that started four years ago in that Connect Academy graduated yesterday with a regular ed diploma. And to me, that is just, that, that's amazing. And, uh, you know, uh, we've got groups, we've got four, we've got groups that will come up in ninth grade, they do freshman academy, and then this is for 10th, 11th, and 12th. And there are some of these students that have already been accepted to post-secondary education, and, uh, we're really hoping some of them may come back and one day help teach those classes. So it's just amazing. If you ever get a chance, uh, it's right beside of our Innovation Academy, where our bridge and our online school is, it's right beside of that. And, and it's just amazing program, and I'm going to send you some information on that. But, but those are just a few things. The other thing, as you know, we had, uh, two weeks ago, we had 17 students that graduated Rome State with their associate's degree. Yesterday, they got their high school diploma. So it's kind of a backwards deal. The other thing is in excess of $11 million in scholarships this year for all the classes, so that, that is just amazing in itself of where, where they're going. Um, the one thing I want to say that, uh, and I hope people on, on television understand this, we can't do that without us all working together, and, and I, and I would be remiss if I didn't say, we can't do it without Hoppy Merriman. I think everybody in here knows Hoppy Merriman. Her, her real name's Angela Merriman. Nobody knows her by that. She's Hoppy. She's been with the Gear Up, uh, we wrote that grant back when this group that graduated was in seventh grade, and she's been with that group through everything. The other thing was so amazing is, is that, uh, we rewrote that grant this year, and we've been awarded another six years of that grant, another $850,000. And she will be starting with an eighth grade class at Clinton Middle School and Norwood Element, Norwood Middle School, and she'll follow that group all the way through. But one of the other amazing things is, as we did her over the last seven years, every year, we put 10% of her salary into our regular budget. So next year, 100% of her salary is in our budget. So that means not only can she help Anderson Clinton High School, she can help Anderson County High School. And that allows us to take that 100, that $850,000 and use more of it to take these students to college campuses, to take them to, uh, just different places. And one of the things they did is they, they had the graduate stand up that says if, if, if Ms. Merriman has helped you get a scholarship, and 100% of the students stood up. So, so that's just amazing, that's some of the people we have in here. Uh, the other thing, just, just to let you know, as maintenance, we have the, the roof being completed at Clinton High School and the Anderson County High School, they're working on a part of the concession stand, and at Norwood Middle School, they're working on getting those roofs repainted. And, and we've had a little rough, uh, patch of getting through it, just because the way the weather is, it's kind of like it was 50 degrees and then it turned 90 degrees. But, but they're working on that. The track, supposedly, they started on the track at Anderson County High School today. Uh, we have plans to do the track at, at Clinton High School next year. Uh, another great thing about that is we will have summer workers this summer for the second year. Uh, we have a lot of our custodial, a lot of our cafeteria staff and a lot of our, uh, classified staff that you know, they only work 200, 210 days. So in the summer, a lot of times, they have to go out and find other jobs, and we want to keep them working for us. And we have figured out that they're a lot better painters than any of our maintenance people because they do it, they're so particular in it because they cook for us all the time. So they painted the biggest part of Clinton Middle School this year, and they'll be doing that this summer. So, overall, it's been a fast year, but it's been a great year for Anderson County Schools.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. Um, good evening, Dr. Perret.
Good evening.
And I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Um, I have two items for you. Could you kind of touch base and, and fill in the blank on the choral ensemble from the Clinton High School?
Clinton Choral Ensemble, it was the first time since 1976 that the choral from Clinton High School has went to the, and I'll get it wrong, it has went to the, uh, oh, I can't think of the name of it right now, but it's the, it's the state, it's the state choral contest. And, uh, this year, McCobbo Hannan, he's been with us about three years, he took that group. They got a superior rating. It was 9.78 out of 10, and, uh, we had them at the Board of Education meeting the other night, and they sang, and they do a tremendous job. And, uh, there are so many, there's, there's so many of those students that are going on into that field.
Thank you. And I have one other, one other question for you. Adele Roberts was here, um, a short time ago.
Yes.
Talking about litter and educating the students, um, on why it's important not to litter, and she brought, or she spoke about Sammy the Skunk.
Yes.
Can you tell us what's going on and where things are progressing with that?
What we are working, we, we are working, we've met with, with, with her a couple of times, and we're working on, uh, building lesson plans that we can use in our guidance. We're looking at doing it in third grade. Uh, so we're working on that. It, it was, it was real hard to do it because when we really got into it is right about, uh, that thing we call state testing, which we won't get into that, how bad it was this year. But, so we, what we wanted to do is get all of our lesson plans in place, and she's helping write some of those, and then we're going to start that in the fall of the year. Uh, I have went out, when we did Read Across America, I went out and read Sammy the Skunk to some schools and talked about that. So it's been a pretty neat thing that we're doing.
Good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions to Dr. Perret?
Dr. Perret, I'd like to, uh, say that I was part of that presentation yesterday, the graduation, and the excellence that our school system has needs to be commended. Our school board, our entire staff, and when you see all those students, they all, I mean, just practically everyone got a scholarship of some, some type and then to work Hoppy Merriman.
Yes.
I personally, and on behalf of this board, we commend you.
Thank you. And, and I think the, the thing with that, if you see on TV all the ruckuses and things they have at some of the graduation, and, and I have to say, our kids are, they, they've been brought up right, and they know, as my dad says, they know how to mine, and, and they do an excellent job. Uh, I won't say anything for the two beach balls we got out of the stands, but other than that, it was a great day. But thank you for that. Thank you, Commissioner, for what, for your support of our school system.
Commissioner Fritz?
Dr. Perret, you hadn't already, uh, that would not be a good thing to maybe, uh, put in the paper or something, you know, is the fact, you know, that this has been the highest graduating, uh, class with the ACT, uh, because you hear so much, you know, that about other school systems, uh, this, that, and the other, but, uh, you know, uh, I want to see my kid over here because they can learn better over here and this and other. This right here shows, you know, what Anderson County Schools are doing to our kids, you know, how they're teaching our kids, and this is outstanding, you know, for them to score so high with the ACT. And it shows what our schools are doing here in Anderson County. And that'd be good to let, make sure that everybody, uh, can, uh, see this and know what we're doing.
Good. We'll, we'll wait. They, they've got one more chance to take an ACT in June, so we'll wait till those scores come in, and that way, that'll finalize some of our scores. We'll, we'll make sure you all get that.
And this is also good advertisement that, uh, the chamber can even use to, uh, to Motus County.
Yes, yes. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perret. Law Director? Oh, Commissioner Scott, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, um, we didn't touch on appearance of citizens at the beginning.
We did.
Um, we did? Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you and members of the county commission. I have just two action items for you tonight. One of them is the Board of Equalization. Commissioner Denenberg had to come off that. She can't serve in both roles, so we have a new, um, representative from Oak Ridge. It's Kathy Edwards. Is Kathy here? Thank you, Kathy. Uh, that resolution is before you tonight.
Have a motion second. We have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
I just want everyone to unanimously vote for this, and we will make an excellent representative for Board of Equalization. And that's all I'm saying tonight.
Anyone else? We have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, the last item I have is, uh, would like to engage outside counsel for Nathan. Uh, we've been negotiating with Methodist Medical on a transportation contract. It means a lot of money to Anderson County. They're holding about a little over 100,000, is that correct? About 120. They're willing to release part of that to us, but there's one stickler there, and we have difference of opinion with Methodist Medical. And, uh, we'd like to engage a Medicare specialist to give us a written opinion. We don't think it's going to cost a lot of money. And Nathan, am I saying it right? Do you need to add anything there?
No, it's just there's some disagreement between us and Methodist on what the Medicare rule actually means. Um, we believe we're right, and they believe they're right. So we want to get counsel who is more particular in that kind of leak out, uh, dig a wall of writing to weigh in on it.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion second. Commissioner Denenberg?
Well, I said I wasn't going to speak again, but last Thursday night, we had, okay, we had the meeting in Oak Ridge, and during that session, uh, Nathan was more specific about that rule, and I think it would be very informative if he were to tell us exactly what the, um, conflict is between our law director and the hospital. Thank you.
All right, so I'll try to explain it as best as I possibly can. So Medicare rules state, um, that
So Medicare rules state that if a patient is admitted to a hospital, they pay the hospital for every day that that patient is admitted. When the patient is discharged and returns back home, Medicare has paid the hospital for that 24 hours of time period. So the issue we're having is, is we've had some patients that in that 24-hour time period has needed a transport back to the hospital. Methodist is not willing to pay for those bills. They tell us to bill Medicare. Medicare denies them because Medicare says we've paid Methodist Hospital. They're still considered an inpatient for the hospital. So I, my stance was, I'm not willing to do those transports for free. And it's Medicare, or it's Methodist's responsibility to pay for those transports. They're not willing to agree to that. And I want that in the legisla, or the legislation, I want that in the contract to resolve it going forward. So we've kind of gone back and forth and sometimes maybe getting this expert in the Medicare rules and laws to draft an opinion letter on it. We're also reaching out to the Medicare middle manager to get their opinion as well, to have all that information, to be able to give it to Methodist to hopefully finalize the agreement. This is one of the last things to finalize. It's not a tremendous amount of money, but I just felt it was our responsibility to make sure we do it the right way.
I think this is actually the last sticking point, isn't it?
I believe so. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. So Nathan, are you stating that this is going forward, or are you looking for funds to come back from a period of time?
Yeah, this is retroactive back to March. So we've continued to do the transports we were doing under the agreement with them. That's where you're getting the buildup. So they haven't paid us since March of last year. So every month, it's increasing. So we're around 120,000 of what they owe us.
March of 2017 or 18?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good for you. Good.
Yeah, so we're, like I said, that part of it is not necessarily a big amount, but again, I think it's the right thing and we're going to continue to see it through.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Mead?
I just want to point out that in this kind of a situation where they're talking about, they're disagreeing on a specific aspect of a federal law, it really is important to have an attorney that is an expert in that field that they will have to yield to. And so that is important. Do we actually have a motion to hire the outside counsel? Okay.
In a second.
Okay. It is important, I encourage everyone to support this. It's not going to cost a lot.
Commissioner Creasy?
You mentioned you have an agreement now with the hospital.
Actually, it's expired, but...
It is expired.
Yes, sir.
Then, yeah, I was getting ready to say, did it expire last March?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, so you're going to write a new contract or a new agreement and try to put the proper language to cover that.
Yes, sir. We've had a few, well, actually quite a few meetings with Methodist, either via email, phone, or Jay and I have gone and sat down with them and their counsel as well. And this is to the next step of where we'd like to go with it.
And I applaud you for being proactive and seeking legal advice, a specialist in that area to help you with that.
Yes, sir.
It's good. Thank you, Jay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smallery?
Yeah, Nathan, I was just wondering, how is this typically handled in other communities? Is it kind of a done deal in other places?
Well, it's kind of funny that you mention that. We've kind of gone back and forth. Methodist Hospital likes to say, well, the ambulance services in Knox County don't require the Knoxville Hospitals to do this. So I've reached out to the ambulance services in Knox County, and they say absolutely we do require them to do this. And when I tell them that, so the ambulance services communicate, and they're doing it just like we are. And then when the hospitals communicate, they say that it's weird. I don't know if that's a game that's being played, or I've heard that happening in the Knoxville Hospitals, between the Knoxville Hospitals as well. So it's, I've talked to the other ambulance services in Knox County, the private services as well, and they require this type of communication as well.
Commissioner White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nathan, I guess my question, or Jay?
Yes, sir.
How much is this going to cost and where's the money going to come from?
I think I've got the money in Legal Services Code, sir.
Okay.
And we don't expect a lot. We're looking for an opinion letter.
No.
He's got an idea of a gentleman that would be uninterested party, that's experienced in this kind of area of law, that can write this letter.
So we don't want to mention any amount?
No, sir.
And part of that is, part of that is, we want to start with the opinion letter. If we need to get some more counsel from them, I would like to be able to go ahead and start doing that. I really do not see this being a tremendous amount of money. I really do not. I really think that the letter itself is going to be, in my opinion, possibly less than $100.
So the contract was terminated a year ago in March. So that's been 14, 15 months.
Yes, sir.
So why are we just now tackling that issue?
So I think part of it is just going through a different process. I think some of it is just communication and just hammering out the details.
Communication.
Sure. Communication with me and Methodist, communication with me and Jay. I've communicated also with the mayor on a lot of this information. So I think it's just been that process. Maybe it could have been accelerated, and maybe that's just something I should have done a little bit more due diligence on and accelerated a little bit quicker. But I think we're going through the right process and making sure we're going and hitting all the steps correctly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCamey?
My counterpart from District Five, just asked the question I was going to ask if we needed an appropriation, but...
I don't think so, sir. I'll let you know.
Those funds are already in your budget. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, the motion as it's presented, and the funds will come out of your budget?
Yes, sir.
And if any other is needed, then we'll come back as, vote on appropriations. Everybody understand what we're doing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's all I have for you, unless you have any questions on my written report or anything else.
Commissioner Warfield?
Can you give us a quick update on what we've got accomplished or what we've got done of that last part of Black House Valley landfill, please?
Sure, I think I've got some pictures I need to send out to you. But as of last Wednesday, everything is working. And I guess the citizens at home are not aware of this, but the final stage of the remediation project is the small pond that's got heavy metals in it. And what we've did there is we put a solar-powered pump on it that has an agitator that's in the water. And it certainly whips up the water, and then it'll filter it into our wetlands that we built back in '06 and '08 down there. And hopefully, it'll be a natural filtering mechanism. Everything is working right now. I was down there the three weeks Friday, and we had everything working on a generator. But as of last Wednesday, we've got everything hooked up to the big solar panel, seems to be working well. The bubbler in the pond works fine. So the next check is what the readings are in about six months. But that is the very last step in the remediation project, other than the yearly monitoring. And this project will be over.
Excellent.
We'll return it to our citizens.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. Jay, because my name was all over the news about the chickens, could you please give us an update?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. That case has been dismissed in the county's favor, and I do want to thank you for your role in that. I know the neighborhood does, and thank you so much. But that case is over. The appeal window has passed, and it, there's no liability on the county.
And I'd like to thank you for your assistance, as well as Jonathan Taylor.
Jonathan, in case you didn't know, Jonathan won another case for us today in Circuit Court. So very pleased with Jonathan Taylor and Art Knight doing a good job for us.
Can you elaborate on what that was?
I can't tell you the details right now, but it's a school system case, and they found in favor of Anderson County Schools, 100% liability on the plaintiff.
Thank you.
Any other questions I can answer for you? Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Reports from committees. Budget Committee report.
Good evening. So, beginning with the cash and fund balance report through April 30th, 2018, the unassigned fund balance is just below $4 million at $3.9 million. Restricted fund balance is $1.2 million. Committed fund balance is $2.1 million. The assigned fund balance is $300,000. And the non-spendable fund balance is just over $1 million, bringing the total fund balance reserves to $8.7 million. The cash fund balance as of the end of April is over $12 million. And again, is favorable to past years. As you can see, last year was at 9.8, and the year before was at 10.5. Moving on to the graphs, the April 2018 financial information. All of these financial indicators continue to be favorable compared to past years. I don't have any new information to share regarding any of these graphs. So unless there are any questions, I'll move on to the regular business.
Commissioner Warfield?
Looking at April 30th, 2018, that's roughly almost $2 million more than it was in 2016. What is that attributed to?
From talking to the trustees' office, the main driver is, two years ago, we moved the 2.8 cents to the Educational Projects Fund. And then this year, we moved that 2.8 cents back to the general fund. So I think that's the predominant driver. If you look at the general fund actuals year-to-date as of April, the blue and the orange and gray bar, if you took that 2.8 cents out of the revenue, the revenue trend line would be flat. So really, it's bringing that 2.8 cents back to the general fund. And then, I mean, there is some growth in the property assessments. So it's, again, it's relatively stable, relatively flat, but it is slowly but surely taking upwards. So it's a combination of those two things.
Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This Code 171, Capital Projects Code?
Yes.
Is that the new one with the 10 cents?
For next fiscal year, that's what's currently in discussion and being proposed, is yes, moving the 10 cents from the General Debt Service, the 451 Fund, over, and most of it is now coming into 171, not all of the 10 cents, because changes have been made.
Oh, so we went below the 10 cent? Because that's what we approved here. I was just curious.
The, well, the budget for the next fiscal year hasn't been, it's still in discussion at the Budget Committee.
Okay.
Okay? The discussion as of what the Budget Committee has approved to date is, I think it's, and I've got, I can speak to the specifics later in the agenda, around 7.5, 8 cents staying in Fund 171, which is the Capital Projects Fund. And then the 2 cents and change is being currently distributed across the other funds to offset a tiered compensation increase for some of the county employees.
Is that to adjust for insurance costs?
It's really just to offset, well, you're right, the salaries and then the fringe impact from that tiered compensation.
Is that something we'll be looking at going into 18 too?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other question for us? She moves forward.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to the summary of budget amendments, starting with Group Two, there's one from the schools requiring board vote.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. We have a second. You need a board vote on that?
Yes, please.
Go to the board and vote, please. Motion passes.
Moving on to Group Three, Transfers School. These are transfers across major line items or pay, well, they're all major line items. So submitting for your approval individually or as a group?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and second as a group. Any discussion on that? You need the board vote?
Yes, please.
Motion passes.
Group Four, Appropriations, Non-School, submitting for your approval individually or as a group.
Motion to approve as a group?
Second. Motion and second, approval as a group. Any discussion? Go to the board and vote, please. Motion passes.
Group Five, Transfers, Non-School, these again are payroll or major line item transfers, submitting for your approval individually or as a group.
Motion to approve as a group?
Second. Motion and second as a group. Any discussion? Go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Group Six, Appropriations, Drawing Down General Fund Unassigned Fund Balance, submitting for your approval individually or as a group.
Motion and second, approval as a group. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote, please. Motion passes.
And then, before I ask for the Budget Committee minutes to be approved from the last two Budget Committee minutes, I would like to say that the Budget Committee is tentatively planning on holding the public hearing on the proposed budget for next fiscal year on Thursday, June 7th. We're meeting this Thursday, so we'll finalize the next steps. And then also, with where we are in the process, if there aren't material changes, proposing two meetings to bring full commission and present the budget for next fiscal year in the late part of June. So with that, we'd like a recommendation or approval of the Budget Committee minutes from April 19th and May 10th.
Second.
A motion and second, any discussion? Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Natalie, I read a little bit in the minutes, I believe it was, about, and I'm going to call it the wrong thing, but is it a manual you're putting together, finance?
Purchasing Handbook?
Yes.
So that was, the Finance Committee took action on that, and it was also presented to the Purchasing Committee. It was approved on the consent agenda. Prior to moving to the 81 law, the purchasing office had what they called, I think it was a purchasing manual, we changed the naming of it, under the 57 law. And it really referenced the law and kind of how the purchasing operation, it was really meant to be a tool to move or to use across funds in different departments. We updated that to reflect the 1981 law. That's been a need to do, that we've been needing to do for some time. And then because it is under the letter of the law, is part of the rules and regulations and process, that's why Finance Committee approved it.
Okay. I saw some things in there caught my attention. The way it reads, is Jay looking over this as well, or?
Jay, I don't know, I don't know. Did Catherine give you a copy? I don't recall if we...
I've got the one section, and then I saw the other section in the, I helped you write the original ones last May. And then the one section that, for County Commission to approve contracts that extend beyond the fiscal year, I worked with her on that part. But I'm not aware of the other changes. I saw them in the County Commission Agenda Plan.
I'll need to check with Catherine. I know that the policy revision, because Jay's right, we had two pieces of business. One was changing the financial management policies and procedures. I think that was Section 9.7, that we did consult Jay in getting that, to make sure that that was meeting the legal requirement. I will check on the handbook.
Nothing important, but one area read you couldn't take a meal. I mean, if we're here tonight and we eat, I mean, the way I interpret that, we can't eat it. I mean, it seems like there would be a guideline, you know, like no more than $50 or $30. We used to have that.
It's a little bit more clear in the ethics policy, if it's like a sponsored, a state-sponsored or local-sponsored chamber event, yes, those are okay. But when we're starting, when we talk about meals from a contractor, no.
Okay. I'm not sure, I can't remember exactly what it said. It just kind of caught my, another thing it said is all leases moving forward will come through the Finance Committee? Is that, did I understand?
That was the part of the policy that we changed around the financial management policies and procedures.
So if, for instance, the mayor goes out and finds a new senior senator, she would then bring that to the finance to get that lease approved? And then it would come back to this body for final approval?
I don't have the... I don't, I don't have the revision in.
I was just curious. It seemed like that's the way it read, so we might want to look at all that, Mr. Chairman.
I think that is the way it reads, you're correct.
So any lease that's entered now through the Anderson County government will go through Finance?
It would also require Jay's approval, I believe that was part of the process.
And then it'll come back to full commission for final approval, okay.
That's right.
All right, thank you, I appreciate the answers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other discussion or questions, Natalie? Mr. Creasy.
I put on the agenda under new business tonight, the topic exempt properties. Mr. Owoski isn't here, I don't believe, but usually, the trustee, I usually ask him, usually around budget time, when we're doing the budget, to bring us up to date on those tax-exempt industries and properties that we have, that we've exempted their tax payment, to give us an idea of where we are, which ones are going to expire and when, and so we can kind of expect what our financial future may be. And I've asked Rodney in the past to do that, and he's come and give that report. In one year, I didn't ask him, and he brought it and mentioned that he was bringing it for me, but anyhow, is that something that you could request or should request from the trustee, and then you give us a report, or should we have the trustee to give us a report such as that?
I can give that to you very quickly, within the next day or two. There's very, I think you're speaking about pill payments, pilot payments and TIPS?
Exactly, yeah.
I can give that to you, Jerry, and I'll send it to all.
Things like the windmill and.
Absolutely.
The Boeing and those things.
There's not very many of them left, so.
I think the Pittman Center was one.
I'll send that list to you and the other members of County Commission next few days.
And then there was some in Clinton.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that'll give us an idea of what our financial future looks like down the road. Thank you, Mr. Yeager.
Thank you, Natalie. Next is Operations Committee report.
We didn't vote to add the first and second.
Okay. We had a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Operations Committee met on May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. First item of discussion was Mayor Frank, Terry Frank. Commissioner McCamey made a motion to send a full commission with a recommendation for approval to allow the mayor to put the building at two oh five Main Street up for sale and to accept sealed bids for a minimum of ninety days. A second option would be for the mayor to come up with plans for fleet service to use the building. Motion was seconded by Commissioner Yeager. The motion passed. Mayor, do you have any updates on that? Not sure we need to take any action right now.
Yes, I actually, Roger Lloyd, the Director of Buildings and Grounds, and John Vickery have been up there, I don't think that is going to be a feasible plan. And then also, in terms of selling the building since that time, and having some discussions, I also have some meetings upcoming with some different architectural firm. I think the best way to proceed would be to ask your permission to engage an appraiser to get us a good base level. I think we all, if we do agree to sell the facility, if we want to go that path, we hope to receive what we paid for it. It is a valuable piece of land, you know, if you drive by there and you see right there in the middle of the city, but how we get there is what we need to learn. So I would request we modify that motion to allow for an appraisal. And then, as operations, my belief of the intent of operations was that we come back to Operations Committee with a lot of choices for you all to make as the decision-makers. So actually, putting on paper, you know, if we choose Avenue A, what those costs would be, if we're, if we want to sell, you know, what would we set that minimum price on? What do other architectural firms have to say about what we could do with that facility? Without, you know, getting into a long discussion here tonight, with fleet service, the ceilings are not high enough. So if we do use that facility and that ends up being the best path forward, then we would need to just engage, you know, a structural design, when we put a new roof on, to be able to lift that ceiling some, to be able to accommodate fleet service. So those are things that we need to do a little bit more work on. Roger's already been working on it, I've worked on it some, and we should have more definite information for you at Operations.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. If I'm not mistaken, the probation services building is now part of Rusty Wallace. Do you have any idea how much they may have purchased that property for? It's not true. So it doesn't say Rusty Wallace? It's Carm, the Carm Building. Okay, do you have any idea how much they may have purchased the Carm Building for? Okay. And the reason why I'm asking is because as we were, as I was leaving the operations meeting the other night, after we had discussed this, I found it quite ironic that there's vehicles right on the property line of where the senior center is. And I made the comment that it's a valuable piece of property, it's right on Main Street. And I got to thinking about it. We purchased the property for roughly six hundred thousand dollars. It would take who knows how much money to renovate or bring it up to code and so forth. I would suggest, call me crazy, but put it up for one point three five million, because of where it's located, because of that piece of property itself, like I said during operations, anybody that goes in business-wise would probably just flatten the thing out and build up what they want. It would give us the money back that we put out for the senior center to begin with, let alone money to be able to build a new senior center if we need to, or to renovate a new building. I realize it's going to go back to operations, but just throwing it out there.
Sure.
For the time being.
Well, and I think an appraisal would also give us, you know, that idea and understanding with sales, like the one you've mentioned that have taken place. The, the main thing about county properties, as Jay explained at the operations meeting, we can't just put it on the market.
Right.
Like a traditional business or landowner can. Because it is government-owned property, we do have to go to a bid scenario. So whether that's sealed bids or a live auction, you have to, once we make that decision, we can set a minimum price, but it does have to be declared surplus, and then that's how you have to proceed according to purchasing laws. So the only exception is, for instance, DARC, where Commission did a private act to be able to transfer a piece of property to them for a dollar, so that's why there is the auction or bid scenario.
Sure, and that's, and that's understandable, but when you were saying to go through and have an appraisal done, that's perfect. I mean, that piece of property is going to be worth more in the sense of doing an appraisal. And I think we need to get our money back and then some to move forward, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Mead. I'll put a bunch of what I was going to say, if it's already been said by the mayor, but because it is an auctions kind of situation, it is critically determined what the minimum price is. And that, so that really requires us to get it, to get it assessed properly, because that's a major determining factor of which way we go on this. If we can only get two hundred thousand dollars for it, which is, I'm just being, you know, it's worth a lot more than that. But if we can't get enough money for it, then maybe putting money into it would be the answer. But if we can get enough for it, then maybe going ahead is the obvious route. And so this is the next thing we really did do before we move ahead, and I support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, the, if we go in that direction, that's going to take some time, and our lease with Mrs. Portwood expires, I think, in October or November.
Yes, sir.
And so I'd like to ask you, if you could, to have the Law Director to engage with Mrs. Portwood, to see what she plans to do with that property, once our lease expires, or would she be willing to extend the lease, or on a month-to-month, or a five-year lease, or something to give us some assurance for our senior citizens?
Sure, and I know that Cherie and the Office on Aging Council are already out there looking at other properties, because the reason Commission approved the purchase of that building was, there is simply not enough space in that building. And so, the existing facility. So we're very thankful and appreciative of that lease, and if we do get to that situation, definitely, we would engage Jay to enter into a month-to-month, or see if Ms. Portwood would be willing to do that. But right now, they're currently actively looking at larger space, and, you know, where they have room, that was the whole intent of the senior building purchase. And just, I mean, there are increased risks of trip and fall in there, if you've been in there, and I know many of you commissioners have been in there, when we have events or classes or meals, they do, they are in need of larger space. So hopefully, we'll be able to find something on the market for around the same price.
Yeah, we don't want to run out and not have something.
Right, yes, yes.
And I can't remember the size of the property of that, that particular piece of property, but if I owned it and had a lease with the county and they needed more space, I would probably make a counter offer and enlarge that, create that space.
You're talking about the existing facility? Yes. Well, one of the issues there, Commissioner Creasy, is also the parking, and so right now, we're, we're kind of skating on the generosity of the adjoining landowners who allow us to park in their space, and if that ever changes one day, we're in serious trouble, because, I mean, we're essentially mooching. They're paying the taxes on it, and they're just very kind and generous to allow us to park there, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCamey.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is that right?
No.
No, sir.
No. Okay, then I will make a motion that we defer this, or refer this to the Operations Committee, and authorize the mayor to go ahead and get an appraisal on the property.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion?
Can I ask for an appropriation to go along with that? I know Roger's budget is, Natalie's worked with him quite often, it's pretty stretched right now, maybe up to fourteen hundred, I mean, I don't know, I did not have time to, Johnny Alley gave me a list of appraisers, and I will get the best price, but I don't know how much that costs. And my understanding is a, is a residential is three to six hundred, but I don't know what a commercial is. Commissioner Meredith, maybe you know?
Fifteen hundred.
Up to fifteen hundred.
Not to exceed fifteen hundred? I'll make that a part of the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. I have a motion, second. Any other discussion on that motion? Commissioner Fritz?
I have a motion on that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's, that's an appropriation.
It's an appropriation, have the board. It takes a two-thirds majority, supermajority.
Into Roger's budget?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fritz, did you have something?
This has been deferred on the first. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, if, I just want to be clear, so the folks at home don't think we're up here just kind of flip-flopping a lot. At the operations meeting, you brought this idea to us, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, you let me know if I'm saying the wrong thing, but I appreciate, you brought the idea of the potential idea of fleet services, and then we also floated the idea. So I just want to be clear for the folks at home to understand that this is a dialogue between your office and this board on these two ideas.
Yes, well, and it's all based on the cost estimates we've received for getting the, that two oh five building up to the standards for its use. So the reason, the idea for folks who may not have watched operations meeting, the reason for the idea of fleet services, it was going to be a different standard than the use of a senior center, which would enable us to do some repairs for lower cost. So just so the seniors know, my office, and I know I don't speak for you all, but I think your intent in purchasing the building in the first place was that they have more space. So we'll just, we'll continue to work, to do the best we can to address all the needs and do it in the most economically efficient way.
And we can't have any events there still, even while we're waiting?
No, we can, we can. I mean, Cherie just had one, I guess, three weeks ago, so.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mayor, I just appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
Next, Mr. Chairman, was a motion, came from the Anderson County Tourism, upon motion made by Commissioner Alderson, seconded by Commissioner Mead, and passed to forward the agreement between Anderson County and the Quality Inn to install a sign at Anderson County Tourism property to full commission approval. If hotel is sold, the agreement will not be transferred to the new owners. I think Jay Yeager provided us with those changes tonight. I'll make that a motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, Mr. Chairman, was the Anderson County Water Authority sewer pump station update, upon motion made by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Mead, and passed to accept the letter of actions taken, submitted by the mayor, and entered into the minutes of the meeting. I so move.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, just to give a quick update while we're on the issue of the Anderson County Water Authority, we did meet with the Anderson County Water Authority, and they have put in some additional clean air capture equipment, and that seems to have helped some degree, Mayor. I know you're out of pocket and appreciate you staying on top of it, but, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think that Anderson County Water Authority is going in the right direction, and they have some other sealants they want to use in the pump houses, and hopefully that'll help with the smell issue as well, and we'll stay on top of it. Next item, Mr. Chairman, Glen Alpine Convenience Center discussion. Commissioner McCamey made a motion to forward a full commission to approve closing the purchase of the property for the convenience center, seconded by Commissioner Scott. I'll lay that out there for discussion and see if anyone wants to make a motion, I think. Jay, Mayor, do you, are we at that point? Yes?
We're ready to move forward. We can close this Wednesday afternoon if you give approval tonight, but the mayor would like approval from this body to sign acceptance on the deed. So if you could put that in the form of the motion, that the mayor, is that exactly what you need? That she has the authority to accept this property on behalf of Anderson County, then we'll, we'll have it done Wednesday afternoon, and I'll send you a copy of the final deed.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on this motion? Commissioner Warfield?
Just to make sure, this might be a silly question, but just want to make sure that we're correct. The contract that we have, is there any issues that could come up with this contract, the purchase contract, I guess? Have you looked over it and everything is good to go, that we can close, that we're safe?
We, we believe, there's always things can come up.
Oh, I know, I know.
We believe that we've got, we've always had a firm contract there, and they've been wonderful to work with. wonderful to work with. The whole issue on the delay is just getting written assurances that we have ingress egress on Norris Freeway. And we, now we have that in two, at the minimum, two forms, I believe. Both the mayor's got one, and I've got one, and we forwarded that to you. So we believe that everything is good to go on that issue. I'm excited about it. I hope this is the beginning stages of the end of this legacy issue. Also, if you don't mind, Natalie, do you need any authority to cut this check?
I just need the mayor's approval.
Is that it?
That's all I'm waiting on.
Okay. We're ready to go Wednesday afternoon.
So moved.
Yeah, we got a motion and second.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. I just want to say, Mayor Frank, Jay, thank you for all the work that you've done on this. I know this has been a 30-year problem, and I think that going forward, it's going to be great for the citizens of District Three, for the county, for the city. And I just want to say, thank you for helping fix a problem that should have been fixed, as I say, 30 years ago. But thank you all very much.
Well, thank you. It's, a lot of this has been on county commission, but you look at the players and the stakeholders, we've gotten support from the city of Clinton, the Chamber, Anderson County, the mayor's worked well on this with the commissioners in the area. And I'm just glad, I remember doing the research on one of the first lawsuits we had. The first motion that I found to move that site was 1984. So it's been a long time, but thank you, Robert, for all your work on it. But hopefully, here, within the next few months, the citizens will start seeing some ground broke up there. And we won't have to deal with that small site any longer on Sinking Springs.
Well, I know that we've looked at many, many different sites.
Sure.
Trying to, trying to move this.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's taken, I hate that it's taken this long, but I think that the location, are we pleasing everybody? No, we're never going to please everybody. But I think that where it's going to go, how we're going to build it, I think it's a, it's a great, great plan.
Centralized, I like that.
Yes, sir, it sure is. Thank you.
Commissioner Creasy.
And everyone remembers, I was opposed to purchase of that property. And I felt it was moving too fast. I felt like the price was too high. And I felt like we could have got it cheaper. I want to commend the mayor for doing the due diligence and taking control and working out a plan to answer all those questions that, especially that I had. And I'm going to support the motion and join my fellow commissioners, because they're all in support of it. I may have been the only one voting against it in the beginning, so, and I definitely do not want to divide us and be against it now. I'm for it, and I'll support the motion.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor.
Thank you all, and I just wanted to make sure that Commission was aware. I did hand out a letter from T.DOT, just a concept approval. But I also wanted to make sure that I did my diligence in letting you know that while T.DOT did use the words, these are the quotes, that Robert Campbell got out of their conversation about an additional turn lane. We recommend it, are not mandating it at this time. So I do, I do want us to go into this knowing that we may, once some traffic studies are done, we may have to do that. If we do, I think there are plenty ways that we can address that. Robert Campbell already has some ideas, maybe instead of a turn lane. T.DOT did say they are willing to look at other design variances. So if we do have a traffic issue, we might just be able to widen a little bit. I forget, there's an acceleration, deceleration, there's already room for that. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. And I appreciate all of you and your work on this, to Commissioner Warfield's point and Jay's point, this has been, you know, at least 30 years. So it would be good to get this off. I would just like to ask for your motion of approval. And I mentioned this to Jay before the meeting, and so he knows I'm getting ready to say this. If we can just have one last meeting, just maybe Chairman Isabelle, Natalie, a commissioner, you know, another commissioner, and make sure there is nothing we did not miss before we hand over that check, I would feel a lot more comfortable myself. I think we have done everything that we need to do, but we've all not been in the same room working on it. And I would, if everybody's agreeable to that, just one last walkthrough, just to make sure. I mean, because we are human, and we do make mistakes, so.
Commissioner Warfield.
Can we do that tomorrow?
Sure, yes, that's, well...
What's a good time for Jay and you?
I know I have a full schedule, but I can send you some openings. Definitely Wednesday morning, I'm free, but I can find some time tomorrow somewhere in that calendar.
Meeting another party for lunch, so I would think you'd be at my office at 1:00 Wednesday, so I don't want to hold him up. If you want to meet tomorrow or Wednesday morning, I can make it work.
Mr. Mead.
I just, I just want to note that there's going to be more than one commissioner at this meeting, that it takes a five-day notice public meeting. So it's going to have to be one commissioner.
Any other discussion on this before we go to the board and vote? I do want to say to the folks at home, this is a project that we have all worked together on, from this Board of Commissioners, to the Law Director, to the mayor. And we feel like all in unison that we're moving forward for the best of Anderson County. Let's go to the board and vote. Oh, Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor Burton, did you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm not saying anything.
That's what I was hoping.
I didn't say that the first time.
That's what I was hoping you'd say, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all.
Mr. Warfield.
Just real quick, Mayor Burton, thank you, and tell the city councilman, too, that we appreciate their patience. As I know, it's been some animosity between us, but I think eventually, hopefully Wednesday, we've cured, we've cured the problem. But thank you very much, sir.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. That record reflect a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you would allow me, I'd like to go ahead and also add the letter that the mayor spoke of from the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation, Region One Traffic Office, dated May 15, 2018. As she mentioned earlier, the subject was concept approval for Anderson County Convenience Center State Route 71 Norris Freeway, Anderson County. I so move.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion pass.
Last couple items, just informational, the mayor brought up, and it was passed in our budget earlier with Natalie. The fire watch at General Sessions Court is in hand and underway, and appreciate Mayor and Roger taking care of that. The other item was, I mentioned that T.DOT signs on Edgemore Road, those have been installed on Faust Carney, so hopefully, we'll quit having semis take Faust Carney's quick side tours. That concludes the report, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor, your report was actually on the consent agenda. Do you have anything you'd like to address?
The only thing is Leon Jacquet, Director of Veteran Services, asked for me to personally invite all of you and those watching at home to the Memorial Day event on Monday at 10:00 a.m. outside on the courthouse, front steps and lawn.
Is the courthouse closed, Mayor?
Yes, it is closed.
Next, old business. Have we got any old business? What about new business? Well, we went ahead and did that when Catherine was up there.
I see, okay.
Yeah, we went ahead and moved that up there. One thing that I would like to ask this board to consider is, is that we do a letter or an award to our school board for their excellence and to hopping merriment as an individual. I can't make that motion, but...
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Vow?
I have something, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Commissioner Vow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not asking for any action tonight, asking for guidance of what we need to do. The fourth district has a couple of road problems in our area that is not any fault of our road department, who does a fine job keeping them in good shape. It's a problem that Commissioner Isabelle's been working on longer than I have, and I tried my hand at it and tried what I could do. I've consulted our law director on it several times. I've made some phone calls, I've sent some emails, but I have reached a proverbial brick wall at this point. I don't know if this issue could go to the Highway Committee, or Operations Committee, or where it may need to go. So any guidance that this board could give me, I'd appreciate it.
Send it to Highway.
Send it to Highway. We made an agreement a few years ago, Jay can give me some specific dates y'all would like, where a gas company was allowed to travel our roads. They damaged those roads, the roads were not repaired, as per the agreement that was made. I've made the phone calls, talked to the people. Now they've quit answering my phone calls. But is that an issue, Mr. Chairman, that we can send to the Highway Committee or Operations? Or, I guess what I'm asking is, can this board put some teeth to this issue and see if you all can accomplish something that I haven't been able to?
Has anyone written a document?
Yes.
We've tried for years, and you're fighting a little bit about it. We've tried to explain to those people up there numerous times. Me and Gary were up there probably a couple of months ago before the meeting. And I explained to one woman, I said, you know, we've got roads that's not even paved, don't worry about potholes. And, you know, we were trying to patch and stuff, so I, I don't know what to do. I'll just be honest, we're, I've made more phone calls than you have. In the past year, Gary has too, and, you know, unless Jay has some type of action that comes along the way, I have no idea. Just being honest.
Commissioner McCamey.
Jay, was there a bond?
In this agreement? There was no bond, it was written agreement. We're outside statute limitations, and they promised us that they were going to go through with it, and they didn't do it. And they've changed hands several times, they're up in Pennsylvania. And that's a brief outline of a very complex issue. It's been going on since about '06.
Would there be any, any possibility that you could file suit?
We're outside the statute limitations. There's a six-year window on contract.
And when, when did the contract end?
I believe it was '08, so talking about 14. I've, I've sent every one of y'all the packet of information on it, all the agreements. They are, the new company is not near as receptive and as easy to work with as the old company.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This kind of ties back to the resolution we passed probably a year and a half ago, a year and a few months, where we asked to increase the mineral severance tax for oil and gas. And those dollars, we were going to put back into the highway fund here to try to repair roads like that. I don't think that ever made it to Nashville and made it to our state representative and senators. And I don't think they had a big appetite to make that happen. So what I'll ask my fellow commissioners, and Jay, if you have any information, if you could provide me with an email and give me a specific description of what the road's damage is, I'll be glad to take it to Tennessee County Commissioners Association and make it an issue at the board meeting tomorrow. And if you get me that...
That's very nice of you, sir.
I'll be happy to do that. No, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Scott.
Oh, thank you. If I could ask Stephanie Strutner to come up to the microphone quite quickly. We'd received an email from Stephanie with regards to how much medication was collected last year. And I'd like you to just kind of fill us in, Stephanie, briefly, for the folks at home especially, to understand that what ASAP does is a very, very positive thing for our communities in keeping it a safer place, for those who have medications that they have to take, as well as educating the public as to what happens when it gets in the wrong hands, if you would.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I was at the State Epidemiological Outcomes Work Group meeting on Thursday of last week, and Tommy Farmer, the Director of the State Dangerous Drugs Task Force, gave a presentation and identified the top four counties who had collected the most and disposed properly the most medications across the state. Anderson County was number four. Despite our population being a little bit lower than some of the more metropolitan areas, our law enforcement agencies and other leaders in this community have really taken a stand to provide disposal options for our residents. And our residents have also taken the onus upon themselves to responsibly dispose of those medications. And so, believe in 2017, almost 5,000 pounds of medication were disposed by Anderson County residents through our law enforcement agencies. So we appreciate folks for taking the initiative to make sure that medications are secured and monitored and properly disposed out of their homes. But also, a major kudos to our local law enforcement agencies for their initiative and their oversight of the medication disposal programs at their agencies. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Warfield.
Jay?
Yes, sir.
Some folks in the Big Valley subdivision that's up in District Three.
Yes, sir.
There's sewer there at the road, but the problem there that there is, a lot of these folks are not going to be able to afford $8,500 to tie on to the sewer. And I really don't know where to start with that. I know in some people's cases, they've put three different field lines in, and they're having problems. Several of the residents have called me about, is there anything that Anderson County Commissioners can do to decrease that amount? Or, and I don't know where to actually start. Can you give me any kind of suggestions?
We need to first start and look and see if we've got grants available for that. I'll do that for you.
Okay.
And let you know.
Okay, thank you, sir.
What, what's the name of the subdivision?
Big Valley.
Okay.
It's up past the split or the Y.
I know where you're at.
Okay. Are they on the left?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other business? The one thing I would like to say is, thank you, commissioners, for your commitment to Anderson County. I can tell you, as being Chairman of this committee, talking to each one of you on different occasions about things that you have going on in your district, and the hours that you all put in. I'm sure that a lot of people don't realize the dedication that you do. And, you know, from the phone calls and the emails, I really appreciate the opportunity to even work with you all, but I commend you. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn? So moved.